All right, Paul, Mr. Butte.
All right, you need to. All right.
Bye.
All right, thank you. Thank you. I'm in at nine o'clock. Good morning, everyone. We're gonna call our meeting to order. We're gonna ask Supervisor Sting to leave us in the prayer. And Mr. Will Slieder leaves us in the pledge. Before then, we can ask everyone, if you will, put your phone on vibrate or turn them off. Supervisor Sting.
Let us pray. Father Lord, again, we give you the praise and glory, Lord, for allowing us to come this morning, Lord, to do the business for the county of Madison County. Father, we pray for our country, Lord, that we continue, Lord, to do things that would be pleasing to you, Lord, but we know that there's this country and many others are, Lord, are struggling, people are struggling, Lord, with inflation and other things, Lord, that harms us, Lord, from doing great things for you. But Father, most of all, we just thank you for being our Lord and Savior in our lives, Lord. We just thank you and we love you in your name. We pray. Amen.
Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Before we get into our agenda today, I've got somebody that I want to introduce, Mr. Greg Huckaboom. Assistant County Administrator. This is his first day on the job. Just gonna say, Greg, welcome back.
Thank you, good to be back.
All right. Ronnie, you can go ahead and get started.
Yes, Mr. President, you have before you the June 6th board minutes. I would ask if there are no changes to the board, please approve said minutes.
Move.
Second.
Got a motion by Carl, second by Trey. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Motion care. Anything else, Ronnie?
No, sir, not for me.
If not, moving right on to concerned citizen. We got Peter.
Bucula.
The Bucula.
Here for Peter?
Not Peter.
No, but I'm here for him. As the board knows, we were in front of the board maybe six times over about eighteen months. Got one more issue, and this is kind of a cautionary measure, but we have one narrow issue. I'll just look at it.
Sure.
Peter is going to develop about a hundred and sixty acres. It was, the zone was modified. There is a small parcel right here at the south entrance that Madison County owns. Before Peter improves this road coming in here, which he has used since nineteen seventy-eight, and I did say seventy-eight, he wants to make sure that he's going to have a permanent easement through there. It's county land. He's gonna put electrical, drainage, sewer, all that. And he wants to know that he's gonna have unimpeded, permanent access, and not only him, but the residents are gonna be going into the subdivision. So wanted to make sure that the board would authorize Peter to have a permanent easement through this small parcel of county land like he's had since nineteen seventy-eight, and that when the road then is modified, you know, improved, still county land, that the residents would be able to come through that small county parcel to get to their homes.
Can somebody ask me why we own some property right there? What is that?
Oh, it moved the road.
Yeah, I'm Tom Bobber, I'm a land planner. This is old Winters Road, right here, and it was relocated to the current location, Robinson Springs Road renamed in the end of sixty-two, nineteen sixty-three. And it's just the land yet. There's all this along here, still county property. It's point two acres. It's just a little sliver. The county's ultimately gonna own it, because when he makes the improvements, he's gonna deed it back to the county. And rather than him own it, then deed it back, and it may sound a little silly, but he just doesn't wanna spend all the money on the infrastructure and then on land he doesn't own.
Why don't he just buy it?
Yeah, that's my question. Why don't he buy it?
You have posted, you have to do all kinds of things. We've been in conversations with Mike about that. There is another individual that has an easement, Mr. Hoskins here, and he'll continue to have that.
He has an easement through the county property now?
Yeah. And so he'll continue to have that. It just seemed like the easiest thing. We've been around the world, I'm more Mike out on this, and it's, you know, since seventy-eight, not getting over in your lane, but it would be a prescriptive easement. He doesn't wanna own it. It's just.
Just be able to use it, and the residents use it. So it is county land, it would remain county land, it would just be improved county land.
I don't have a problem with it, but I'd rather see him own it.
Well, but he's gonna turn around in six months and deed it back.
Yeah.
He's just gonna deed back the.
Yeah, because it'll be.
The road.
It's gonna be a public road.
Right.
It's gonna be a public road.
He's basically building a public road.
If he wasn't gonna deed it back, I agree, he needs to own it, but it's not a private road. It'll be.
What you want, Mr. Bank?
Okay.
Yeah, dedicate it to the county.
I bet twice, more than that. It's not a legal issue.
Right.
Yeah, like I said, it's just a cautionary, just wanna make sure that every eye is dotted, essentially.
Well, I'd like to make the motion that we go ahead and grant the what they're trying to do, so we can go ahead and build a road.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Carl, second by Gerald.
And basically, what we're asking, what they are asking us to do is grant them an easement.
Right, yeah.
On that piece of property.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Build a road.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion care.
All right.
All right, guys?
This way.
Ronnie got something here, sir. Ronnie got something. All right, another concerned citizen? If not, we'll move down to consent item. On number nineteen and twenty. I got a request there, Sheldon. If you will, make the chairman of the mega site fire district sign what he's sending in. Now he's just got a type, name on it. Have him to put his signature on it.
You want to sign it?
Yeah, let's do that.
Why don't we make the motion that pass those with the understanding that the signature will be there before payment?
Can we do that, uh, comptroller?
Yes, I'll hold it until we get the signature.
Hold it?
Hold it.
Yeah.
All right. Just hold them till we get signature.
I'll second that.
All right. All right, right now, we wanna hold nineteen and twenty, so we just take those two off of the consent item, and now we need a motion on the rest of the consent item.
You gonna vote on that? Does it matter?
There's a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent item with the exception of nineteen and twenty. Is that, is that what you're?
That's it.
Okay.
Motion by Gerald, second by Carl, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion care.
But Paul, I do wanna come back on nineteen and twenty and make a motion to approve a payment and hold payment until, until both of them are signed.
Okay. All right, comptroller, bear the head, think she finally with it.
Second, the motion.
All right, Carl, motion by Gerald, second by Carl, all in favor? All opposed? Motion care.
And that is signed by the president?
Chairman.
Chairman of the board, yes.
Yeah. And that would be any, I guess, coming in for any of them fire district.
Right.
Most of them are doing it already. They're kind of new at it. All right, moving right along at, uh, number thirty-two, that'd be me. I just wanted to prove this to see if any, if any supervisor or administration wanted to go to NACO. I used to go pretty often till, till I took on another job, and here comes COVID, when I didn't have that little job. So good possibility of a storm, start going back. If the board see fit to approve this.
Mr. President, I'd make a motion for approval.
All right.
Anyone would like to go?
Yeah, second motion.
Let's, if you will, add one more department in there, if you don't mind, approve for the assistant county administrator, if he chooses to go also, if you don't mind.
Okay.
All right. Now, I got a motion by Gerald and second by Carl already. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion care. All right, moving into our business item, Sheldon.
The next item is your fiscal twenty-twenty audit report. Mr. President, board members, today I present to you the fiscal twenty-twenty financial report for, financial audit report for Madison County. This audit report represents the last year for which I have served as comptroller for any part of the year. The report was delayed by COVID-nineteen and other scheduling factors with our auditor. Please let me direct you to pages four and five. Here you will see two opinions. Beginning on page four, you will see a reference to the county's decision to not include component units in the stated financial statements. This has been the practice for approximately twenty years and probably should be reconsidered, not necessarily changed, but reevaluated in future years. The final opinion located on page five indicates that the auditor has given an unmodified or an unqualified opinion on the financial statements of the primary government, Madison County. Then if you move over to pages sixty-two, sixty-four, and sixty-eight, for the specific tests being performed according to those reports, those components of the report, there is indication of no findings reported in this audit for the fiscal twenty-twenty year.
All right. I need a motion to.
So, Mr. President, would you accept this audit report and authorize the appropriate advertising that is required by statute?
Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Carl made the motion.
Second.
Second by Gerald. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion care.
And Mr. President, if you will humor me for just a moment, board members, the conclusion of this tenth audit that I have managed for you also coincides with the ending of the tenth budget that we have prepared together. During these ten years, I have followed your direction to strengthen the county's financial position in pursuit of a healthy bond rating for Madison County. You have built a strong surplus that assists in maintaining your bond rating, and you and I both know that a healthy bond rating keeps the cost of borrowing money low. As you invest in infrastructure today for this county, you use low-cost debt to build the infrastructure now and match the payment of the debt to the use of the acquired infrastructure over the next decade or more. You've taken a proactive approach to your debt management, utilizing your debt capacity without tax increases to provide support and funding for the projects that are important to this board and the citizens of Madison County. During these ten years, during this decade, we have also developed a no incremental cost to the county of paying your vendors electronically. While other local governments outsource this effort at a vendor cost of up to three percent, Madison County uses a secure payment method to reduce stolen and lost checks, allowing vendors to be paid promptly and securely at no cost to the county. About four years ago, when the legislature changed purchasing law to require acceptance of electronic bids, Madison County worked with its web vendor to create its own bid portal again at no incremental cost to the county and no cost to the vendor. There are commercial bid companies that provide this service at fees of up to three percent, but Madison County's vendors participate with no cost. A healthy bond rating for low interest rates, electronic payments, and our own bid portal, these are three items that make the cost of doing business in Madison County lower for our vendors and ultimately our residents. There was a time during these past ten years that the concept of public improvement districts seemed to be a household phrase because you were in lawsuits related to two of these districts. Together, we've worked through these challenges and achieved a win with one district and a beneficial resolution that became a win for the other. Today, you can see the development that is occurring just outside of the city of Madison, and I know that we all look forward to the day that Reunion Crossing Parkway opens and development occurs on the north side of the city of Madison. During the past decade, we have built three quality buildings from design to opening. We've remodeled offices, re-roofed buildings, repaired storm damage, in addition to a million dollars' worth of storm damage repair that's underway right now at the detention centers. All of these have occurred with minimal fanfare as your facilities have been improved to serve constituents. And an important thing for you is all of this has occurred while you have maintained a static, an unchanged overall tax rate for the past decade. And who among us can forget the exhaustion caused by COVID-nineteen? COVID-nineteen was, of course, a terrible thing for our entire country, but during this time, Madison County stayed open for business, protecting their residents and residents of Madison County. And today, as ten years comes to a close, I find myself in a position where it's time for a different chapter of my life. I appreciate the opportunity to have served Madison County. It's been great. It's been great. It's been an honor. And today, I ask that you accept my retirement effective June thirtieth of this year.
All right. Sheldon, Madison County gonna miss you. I'm gonna miss you. But I know things come up and other opportunities present itself. I've been basically where you standing right now. I have to make those type of decisions. You have served, and you have served well. I hate to see you go. Be hard to replace you. Thank you for your service of Madison County.
Thank you.
Anything else, board, board members?
Sheldon, I also appreciate you as well. You've definitely looked out for the county and this board, and give us excellent advice to help us move this county forward. And words cannot express how grateful we are of you being in this position. And prior to that, you was in comptroller, did an excellent job there as well. So you're a big part of what you just named off or what you just said earlier before you handed us this letter. You've always been there, always been up front with us, and always helped us work through issues, trying to figure out how to make them happen. And you're a big part of making that happen in Madison County. I personally, as along with Supervisor Griffin, would miss working with you and regret that you turned in your resignation. But I understand. You know, we all have to move forward. But with that being said, thank you for your service to Madison County.
Thank you.
Well, I'd like to say something too, 'cause I remember the first day that I met you, the first day you walked into this room, when we had to interview you.
I didn't know anybody in the room.
Yeah, that's right. And it was very interesting, but, you know, from that first interview, I knew that we needed you to be a part of Madison County. And I'm gonna miss being able to call on you for information, advice, 'cause we've shared information and advice for a long time. And I'd say I appreciate the time that I have had you here in Madison County, and I've been here in Madison County with you. You know, the, I guess, it comes a time when you do decide, make a decision to move forward and move on and look at other opportunities and things you might wanna do in life, 'cause I know that this, this job can, it can be difficult at times because you don't.
All the time.
You don't get a chance to get away from it. You get calls at home, you get calls on the weekend, you get calls Saturday, Sunday, it doesn't matter. So, you know, I wish you well and thanks for the time that we did have.
Thank you.
Anybody else, board members? If not, I entertain a motion on the.
Acknowledge. Acknowledge?
Yeah.
Yeah. Motion.
Second.
Got a motion by Trey? Second by Carl? Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion care.
Thanks, sir.
Okay.
Thanks for your service, man. Right. But that letter did say June thirtieth. So we gonna work you until the end. All right. Moving right along to our election commissioner, Pat.
Good morning, board.
Good morning.
Uh, what you have in your packet, a estimate from Frankie J's Moving and Delivery out of Brandon, and there is one correction. They've got the date as, on the bottom is June twenty-eighth. Well, that's actually Election Day. They need to go pick everything back up on Wednesday, which would be June the twenty-ninth. And we're contacting him to send us a new one so we can sign it with those correct dates. But they have made a estimate here about what they can do for moving. Mississippi Van Lines has declined to assist us with anything on this runoff. And so we had to find somebody else that would try to do this, and because of the timeframe within it, we do have time to bring it to you here, but we need approval that we can get it resubmitted with the correct date, you know, today and get it signed. It shows Commissioner Helen Carney on the bottom, but I felt like maybe at your discretion, it should be signed by the board president. And so we can tell them to make that change to it as we make contact with them this morning. If you do so, approve that.
Mr. President, I'd make a motion to approve with the starting date of June the twenty-seventh, as they have on the contract, to go through June the twenty-ninth.
Yes, sir.
For pickup purposes, for an estimate up to ten thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars.
Correct.
And with the signature would be the chairman of the, of the board.
Board, yes, sir.
Board.
Got a motion by Gerald, second by Carl? Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion care.
And we really appreciate the help you gave us at an emergency the other day, 'cause it did, excuse me, it did help us tremendously with being able to pick the equipment back up, and so thank you for that.
All right. Thank you. All right, we have next, Dale Architack. Come right on up.
How are you guys today?
Fine, man.
Good morning. Today, I'm presenting the bids on the Fairview Rogers Estes Park Restrooms. Originally, I gave a schematic design estimate last year at about four hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars for, for the restrooms at Fairview Estes and Rogers. Between that time and the bids, we added Sulphur Springs to that. I did not update the bids. Due to the nature of current construction market and the bidding, I believe the bid market is saturated. We only had one bidder on this, but the bids came in a little higher than I would have hoped for this project, but I think it is consistent with, with other, other bids that we are receiving. Now, granted, this is a unique one-off type of project for, for restrooms, so it's very difficult to, to project what the cost per square foot on these. So just to give you some idea, the, my original estimate was about two hundred and sixty dollars per square foot. Now, these are so specialized, you can't really consider a cost per square foot. But the bids came in for all project, all of the toilet projects together, combined at one million, seven hundred and nine thousand dollars, with the average cost per square foot on these at about one thousand dollars, one thousand, one hundred dollars per square foot. So I would say that we have the option to recommend awarding all of, all the projects combined at one point seven million dollars to Flagstar Construction Company, which, by the way, is a reputable construction company that, that we work with on numerous projects. I did talk with them today, and they confirmed that, that, that our original thoughts are the, the market in construction right now, and the estimate for lead times on materials and things escalated their cost for this. So I would have reason to believe that this, this bid amount is acceptable should you choose to award that.
All right. Mr. Bank?
Well, there's no question that this is not an ideal time to be constructing anything, really. You know, yeah, it's gonna, the cost, cost up, and getting materials, finding, finding materials. Something like windows and doors and things like that, but I've been looking at a couple of projects myself, and, you know, actually, one, I just crossed out, I'm not gonna do. But it's, it is difficult. How many, this is, how many parks we?
It is a toilet at Fairview Park, Estes Park, Rogers Park, and a little bit larger toilet project at Sulphur Springs. You know, one other option would be to, if there's special parks that, that need a restroom over the others, we could, we could award these individually for the special parks. You know, I would not recommend rebidding it. I would say one hundred percent of the time that we ever rebid a project, the, the cost comes in higher.
Let me, Sheldon, what is our budget for, for these?
I'm sorry, I do not recall. I would have to go look. Mr. Griffin, do you remember what the number was? We talked about it several times last.
Yeah, it wasn't one point seven million dollars.
If we knew what the budget was, and some reason or another, you know, I won't recall, five hundred thousand, maybe seven hundred thousand.
Well, the schematic design estimate was four hundred and thirty-eight, so I don't know if you said what. The schematic, the early estimate was four hundred, four hundred and thirty-eight thousand, so I don't know if you established a budget based on that estimate.
We wouldn't have had that number when we put the budget together.
Okay.
I think that it was three quarters of a million for, for three, remember to begin with.
Yeah, I remember the three, yeah.
But, but I would need to go and dig through some notes before I could confirm that.
Is that something that we probably just acknowledges and maybe at next board members, I mean, next board meeting to see what, what we have in the budget?
Makes sense.
And then we can actually say, hey, we wanna do this one, or two, or, or three?
So there's only one bid, so take that bid under, acknowledge that bid and take that bid under advisement. And this contractor is a contractor that we have worked with before, so we, we were very pleased with their work on a prior project.
Okay.
Mr. President, I would make a motion, take this, this bid under advisement for, for this meeting, and then come back next board meeting and see how much we actually budgeted for restrooms at these parts.
Motion by Carl, I mean by Gerald, second by Carl. Second by Carl. In other discussion. Not, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry. All right. Thank you, here.
Thank you. You guys have a good day.
All right, next, Tim, Account Engineer.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
First item I have for you is the final plat of Caroline Point of Lake Caroline Phase Three. This is 13 lots and there's no public infrastructure involved in this one.
Motion?
Second. Motion by Trey. Second by Carl. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry. What else, Tim?
Each year, we are to provide our DUNES number to FHWA for all federal money we get. And it's my understanding that the DUNES number has changed to a E U E I number. So, I'm asking for the Board President to be authorized to sign the new requirement sheet or the new obligation June reporting sheet for FHWA.
Motion?
Second. Motion by Gerald. Second by Carl. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry.
All right. Next item I have is a request of the Board to authorize for the advertisement of C E and I services for Reunion Two.
Motion?
Second. Got a motion by Gerald. Second by Carl. Explain that to
What is C E?
Yeah.
That's the construction, engineering, and inspection. That would be the engineering services for the construction of that project.
All right, then.
That's what we've been trying to get to.
That's what we've been trying to get to.
Oh, yeah. So, you can't just make that that simple when you say a C E I. I know we got people that are waiting on this to happen, so you got to explain it after we announce you to explain it. All right. Motion by Gerald. Second by Carl. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry.
All right. And the biggest item I've presented in quite a while.
And I was, and explain this one, though, just.
This is request of the Board to authorize for the advertisement of construction bids for Reunion Two slash Reunion Crossing. This is the section in between Bozeman and Parkway East with the bridge over the interstate.
All right. Got a motion by
Trey.
Trey. Second by Sheila. In other discussion?
No, this other one we've been waiting on as well, so.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, go ahead.
All right. Next item I have is permission from the Board to allow Joe McGee Construction to subcontract work to the following subcontractors for the Simpson Road Bridge Repair, those being Clearpoint Consulting Engineers, Hope Enterprise, and Traffic Maintenance Service. And also authorize the Board President to to assign the estate aid form F S F A S S A S C One for each subcontract.
Yeah, that was a mouthful, wasn't it?
It was.
All right. Carl, motion. Sheila, second. In other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry.
Hold up, Tim. I got some sinkholes in the right of way in Glug Step. Worked with Greg, get some estimates together with the mayor and or Lindsey Kellum to move forward with getting those sinkholes fixed. And number two, got a request for a whole lot of stop signs in Lake Caroline. Set a meeting with Tommy Guest, I guess, at the clubhouse out there, and let's go look at, you know, I I'm not sure these policy to use these things for traffic calming, so maybe let's go out there and take a look, see what we can do.
Okay. I'll set up a meeting. Would you like to be in that meeting?
Do what?
Would you like to be in the meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
On on those stop signs that you're talking about out there, don't we have policy, the county have policy on what what criteria you need to put up a stop sign?
There's a federal criteria. There's a
That's what you
There's a warrant analysis. Right.
All right. Sound great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Still looking for that motor grade driver, Tim?
We are actively.
Because the one that we have, his time gonna run out soon. Then we'll be left empty.
We sure will. Yes, sir.
So, you, Canis, whoever else, if you had to find somebody and train them, we need we need that motor grade driver. At least I do. My district and my constitution need it.
Yes, sir.
Ridgefield don't need it. Madison don't need it. Carl needs a little.
Yeah, I think we all need it. Period of time, it's not leaving
I think everybody's got one or two at least.
Yeah.
So, put put that on your top list of finding someone.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, here.
Thanks.
All right, who's next? Scott?
Good morning, Mr. President, Board of Supervisors.
All right.
Good morning.
First item I have is Gloria Stein Anderson Simpson. This is medical hardship, place a mobile home in a residential district, 526 Church Streets, in Sawmill Quarters, Supervisor District Five.
Uh, is Ms. Simpson here?
Yes.
All right, you must don't know who your supervisor is. I walked right by and you say, hey, I'm on your agenda. You doing all right? All right, then. All right. Well, I'm gonna make a motion to approve this.
I'll second.
Second by Carl. In other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry. All right. You good to go. I hope that go well. All right. What else you got, Scott?
Uh, next item is a plat amendment of Churchill of Charlton Place combining two lots, 54 and 55 into one lot, Supervisor District Four.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Motion by Carl.
Second.
Second by Gerald. In other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry.
The last item I have is Larry and Barbara Jones' permit refund in the amount of $736. They chose not to construct this residence due to, I think, some health issues and the pandemic.
Move. Motion by Carl.
Second.
Second by Gerald. In other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry.
That's all I have.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Norman, Fire Department.
Hey, good morning, Supervisors. On the agenda, it did say, my first item is the purchase of a fire truck, but it's actually the purchase of two fire trucks.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I need to get a, and both these trucks are gonna be considered pumper tankers. And I need to, I had a request from the new Central Madison County Fire Protection District if they were wanting a pump tanker truck for them. And floor, the truck at floor needs to be replaced, too. It's a, I got the date, it's like 25 years old on that truck. And we have several trucks in the county that are over 20 years old. One thing when I'm doing this truck, we have to, I can actually purchase it on state contract. But when the vendors give me a quote because of the supply chain and the cost of everything going up, the quote's only good for 30 days.
Ooh. How long it take a mega truck?
It's gonna take 570 days to get the truck in. So, it's gonna be a year and a half once we place the order before we receive the trucks. So, those, so floor truck is gonna be 26, over over 26 years old now, and it's gonna be a year and a half. And that's if to get the other truck in for the Central Madison Fire Protection District. And that's if we start the process after today, it's gonna be that long.
Well, my honor, tell us how much the trucks cost and what fine the money comes from.
The truck, each truck is 464,684. And it's gonna be a total of 929,368. We use fire rebate, fire insurance rebate funds to purchase these trucks. And in 570 days, we'll have more than that in our fire rebate.
How much will we have?
We'll have 953,040 by the time the trucks come in. But I'm also applying for two RIFTAF Rural Fire Department grants, state grants for these trucks, which would be 90,000 apiece. So, that'd be 180,000 to apply towards the purchase of this truck, of these trucks. So, that will, we'll have plenty of money to purchase these trucks. But there's a process I have to go through to get these grants. First of all, y'all have to make a proclamation that, or whatever, that y'all assign me to apply for these grants, for each grants. One is round 13, and then y'all authorize me to apply for round 14 to get the grants.
Why, you you only needing that today?
Well
Tell tell us what you need today.
First of all, the lock in the price, I need y'all to authorize the Board President to sign a purchase agreement form. And it's like when you buy a house where you lock in your rates before you actually do all the process. This will lock in the price of the truck right now.
For those two trucks?
Right, for 464,000. Because I have to wait, once we do the the proclamation for me to process those grants, I have to wait to the next board meeting before y'all, to get the minutes, approved minutes, so I can send it in. So, that's gonna be an additional two weeks. And then, I have to send that in to the state
Good.
To get, get their approval before I can, before the county can issue a P O number.
I think you got it. You got it, Carl?
I do have a couple of questions.
You got a couple of questions?
On on these pumper trucks, Flora, are these just regular fire pumper trucks?
No, they're
That you're asking for?
They're, they're not anything, they're standard trucks.
Okay.
But this is actually a, most, most of your trucks we get from the counties have been commercial chassis. These actually be custom chassis, which they're a little bit better line truck, but they can assure better delivery because they build them from ground up. They don't have to wait for a commercial vendor because they're having delays on those trucks.
I I got that part. I guess my my point is, is that's what, is are these type of trucks really what we need?
Yes, sir. I've talked to both
Or the central, because have they, hadn't they contracted with City of Canton?
Right, this truck would, it would belong to the county.
What would it be parked?
It would be probably at Station Two
Okay.
In Canton.
But but we definitely, to service that area in the county, we need this pumper truck.
Yes, sir.
And not a different type of truck.
It's it's a pumper tanker truck. It carries more water than a normal pumper truck. Most of your pumper trucks in the cities carry 500 gallons, some of them carry 750 gallons. This would be 1,500 gallons.
Well, and that's really, I think, that I've had some conversations there that they're really needing water supply
Yes, sir.
There, not necessarily a truck, because City of Canton has the truck.
Right.
They're really just needing more water supply.
Right, that's why we're going with a pumper tanker.
Yeah, but that's what I'm saying is, would it not be some consideration to get a larger tanker for water supply instead of the pumper?
Well
If if we're gonna service the county, I mean, outside of the city, and that's really what we're looking to do.
Yes, sir. But the, most of our pumper trucks, because of the size of the the back part of the truck that carry 3,000 gallons of water is bigger, and we we will carry four people, we need a crew cab truck that carry four people.
I guess what I'm saying here, you, I don't want to see you back up here in six months saying, guys, we need a, we need a water truck.
I've
You know, with 10,000 gallons to service this area. If that's what we actually need, that's what we need now.
We're actually also building up, and I'll be getting with y'all later on, like next year, is we're like the pumper truck, I mean, the tanker truck we bought for Kearney Park, that's 3,000, not Kearney Park, Valley View is 3,000 gallons. That's what we're going towards, but those are single cab trucks. And eventually, we're gonna replace some of our older trucks that are crew cabs
I got I got that part.
With these trucks.
I just want to make sure that we're ordering what we need to service the area that we're looking at to service.
Right, I've talked to the fire
That's really what we, that's that's the main thing. And also, Shelton, I would like for you to look, I know Norman made the statement saying that over a period of, what, two years or three years, we would have the money to pay for these trucks
Yes, sir.
Through, you know, the the fire protection tax that we get.
It's fire rebate.
A rebate plus, yeah, the the 90,000 or 180,000.
180,000 total.
So, if you will, let's, y'all two work together and make sure those numbers are accurate.
Okay.
We just don't want to be surprised when it gets here and it's not there.
Yes, sir. I I actually went and looked at all that and
Do you work with Shelton on it?
Sir?
Do you work with Shelton?
No, sir.
Those numbers? Well, you always need to work with the comptroller.
Right. I understand that.
I mean, need to work with both of them.
Right.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President.
Would you look at, because the motion approve these two subject to the numbers being checked by the
Yeah, I'm good with the number. I mean, if the number's not there, Shelton's gonna bring them back anyway. You know?
Yes, I'll come at the next, with the, it'll be two board meetings before I can come up to get approval for the purchase order.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion, go ahead and approve purchase of both of our trucks.
Second.
I got a motion by Carl, second by Trey.
And authorize the Board President to sign.
Yeah, that was his motion.
That's my motion.
In other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carry. Thanks, Matt.
Thank you. Did y'all, did you, Mr. Ronnie, did you put on there that they authorized me to apply for round 13 and 14?
That's all part of it.
It's all part of?
All in there what you had.
All in that one motion.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Yeah. Won't you make work with the comptroller and the county administrator on it?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Okay, my other item, I got a request from the Floor Fire Department that the two trucks that they have, that they were assigned from the county, has outdated SCBA bottles, which is breathing air.
Mm-hmm.
And they, they said they're gonna, first of all, the brand they have is no longer available in United States, and they can't get any service. And they're having to replace their city-owned trucks, which is newer truck, too. But they say they're gonna replace the city trucks, and they feel the county should replace their bottles that are outdated on the county trucks. And that will be eight bottles, eight air packs. And it comes to a total of 69,308 to replace those air packs. And and those will be county equipment because you're going on county trucks.
You got the money for that?
No, sir.
Is it in the budget?
It wasn't in the budget. This is a request I didn't know about.
How much is it?
69,000.
Yeah, 69,308.
Make a make a motion to take it under advisement, and you work with the supervisor that district and the city of Florida.
Okay.
We have to find the money.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll second, I'll make that motion.
Yeah. All right. Motion made by Carl.
Trey, I'll second.
Trey, I'll second. Take that second to Trey.
Trey gets a second, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry.
My honor, have you talked with the state about getting assistance buying those fire trucks?
Well, I I searched everywhere I can for grants, and the grants want to be available to apply till the end of this year. And then, it'll be the first of next year before they're awarded, and it takes up to six months to get the equipment in. Well, I, I searched everywhere I can for grants, and the grants want to be available to apply till the end of this year. And then it'll be the first of next year before they're awarded, and it takes up to six months to get the equipment in.
And they have a fund set aside to help municipalities and counties buy fire trucks, so you might want to touch base.
Sir, I couldn't hear you.
Touch base with the fire commissioner, the state fire marshal, touch base with him. Get an assistance buying the truck.
I'll, I'll get with them and see what they could do. And also, the, let me see what I had it. Okay, and also, my next thing is our truck we have in Camden Fire Department. The, uh, the air packs are only, you only can use them for fifteen years. And the ones in Camden, on the county fire truck they have, are sixteen years old. And we'd have to replace four of those. And theirs aren't working properly, and then we can't get parts for it. And we can't get service on it because the manufacturer doesn't support those, that model anymore because of the age. And that truck, to replace those four bottles with all the accessories you have to get to replace them, is thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars. And that'd be for Camden Fire Protection District. They're in the same boat that Flora's in, on their SCBAs.
All right.
I'll make a motion to acknowledge, and then we can work on the budget for next year, right?
Uh, motion to acknowledge, uh, I second that.
Well.
And what else you got to tell?
Well, on, on that one, if we do it next year, I, I am gonna try, I'm gonna apply for a grant to replace some others we have that are getting the age, that they're gonna need replacements in. But like I said, Camden's isn't working at all.
At all? Okay, we, we are talking on that, see if we can come up with something else.
Yes, sir, we can do something next board meeting.
Since it ain't working at all.
Also, just to follow up on the others, we need to know about all of the stations.
Yes, sir.
You know, if you're gonna do one or two, you need to look at all of them.
I, I did, I went around and looked, and that's why I can.
Well, if you did, we'd have had this one during our budget time. And we need to look at this during our budget time, is really what I, what I'm saying. So, if you will, if it's not working, it definitely needs to be working now.
Yes, sir.
I, I agree with that, and, but we need to look at, we need to have them all in front of us and see what the cost is, you know, for all of them.
Yes, sir, that's why I'm gonna apply for a grant to get everyone in the county that's a certain age replaced.
Got you, thank you.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, better go, I mean, Mike, let's talk, uh, in the next week or so.
Okay, that'd be fine.
Just here, not working at Camden at all, and see what we can come up with.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Okay, appreciate it.
Thank you. Moving right along, Drew, building ground director.
Mr. President, board, I have two items, uh, both are a reimbursement request for MDEQ. These two grants were used for our Household Hazardous Waste Day. Uh, they are SWC by five-five, which is a total amount of sixty-four thousand, twenty-two dollars and eighty-five cents, and SW twelve-seventy-two, which is for twenty-one thousand and sixty-eight dollars. I'm requesting an approval of these to submit to MDEQ and be reimbursed for those funds.
Make a motion for approval.
Second the motion.
Motion by Gerald, second by Carl. End of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Drew. Uh, uh, Drew, one more thing before you go, hold on. Architect and design playground equipment.
Yes, sir.
Where are we?
Uh, we have advertised. I will follow up on the dates on when we will be doing the bid opening.
You doing what now?
The bid opening.
Okay, all right. Rogers Park and Camden moving on through?
July fifteenth. July fifteenth is the bid opening for Sulphur Springs.
Bid opening for Sulphur Springs?
Yes, sir.
Okay, where, where is Rogers and Camden?
I'll have to follow up on the architect for an update.
Let me have the update along with Mr. Banks, yeah?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Mr. President, uh, Drew, the sign out at Rogers Park, where we're replacing, or at least updating the sign, because I don't know if you realize, but one side of the sign you couldn't read, and the other side, the sun had, had.
Leached it out.
So what, what's going on with that?
Uh, we reached out to Mun Signs, uh, got a quote, have moved forward to get that replaced. I'm waiting to get an update from them on when the sign will be ready. Uh, we've already sent in, so it'll just be, uh, when that is completed and delivered to us for installation.
So I'm telling you that because if you drive by and you see that there's no sign there, it's because they've disassembled it to, uh, repair it and get it ready for replacement.
And I also heard there was a tree missing out there. What happened to the tree?
A tree missing?
Yes. What?
Storm knocked it down.
Storm guy? Okay.
It was right near the pavilion.
Okay, all right. I, I heard all that. I heard all that at, at Juneteenth last night when I went to it Saturday. All them complaints that were coming over there in District Four.
Man, that's good, I'm glad.
They must not know who their supervisory is.
Yeah, that's it, they must not know who their supervisor is. All right, Drew, thanks here.
Yes, sir.
All right, our next is our lawyer.
Good morning, board.
Good morning.
Items of forty-nine and fifty all relate to the reunion parkway. And forty-nine, it says land swap transaction, that's a little misleading. And, uh, but, uh, I'd like opportunity to explain to the listening public, because this is significant. This is the last piece of land that had to be acquired by this county to proceed with the construction of the bridge, the reunion bridge, uh, across I-55, to land on the east side of I-55 to connect to, uh, the road to be built to Highway Fifty-One. So it's the last acquisition of land from Highway Twenty-two on the west to reunion parkway across I-55 to, uh, Highway Fifty-One. It's the last one, but it's confusing, but it's a good deal for the county, I want to explain. And before, I want to thank, uh, the chess clerk's office for working with me on this, because this, they did quite a bit of work on this. All right, it says land swap transaction, but really what it is, is to forgive. It's within your authority to forgive tax liens and tax sales and anything related to an erroneous taxing of property. And, and that's what I'm gonna ask you to do, but let me explain it. In order to build this bridge, it's gotta have right-of-way for interchange. And the land right now is owned by St. Dominic's Hospital. They've always owned land on the Parkway East pit, the administrator talked about PIDs. Well, Parkway East pit is there. And, uh, St. Dominic's has owned land right here, it's about twelve point three acres of land that they own, which we have to have for their bridge to settle on the, on the east side. Of course, we could buy it, we, it was appraised for about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars to buy this land. And if they had not, if they hadn't agreed to sell it, then we could have condemned it and gotten it by eminent domain, but that would have been a couple of years and even more money. So what we decided to do was to be innovative. And, uh, we met with our hospital lawyers a couple of times and, uh, explained to them it'd be great if we could swap their land, uh, twelve point five acres for land already owned by Makita, which is about a half about north, also on the pit, fronting Parkway East pit and fronting I-55 north. And that's about thirteen acres. It's owned by Makita, which is your agency in the government, and they, they exist for economic development. So Makita automatically agreed to it. They see the good in it, because this is gonna open up that whole area for development once the bridge is there. But, um, but St. Dominic's had to be persuaded. Uh, there's two things they wanted. The first thing was, they had to know that their pit fee would not increase, even though the land area was larger. Makita's like one acre larger than the land with, that we, that we'll be getting. Uh, and, uh, we don't control pit fees, that's about the Parkway East pit. But through meetings with them and the bondholder, they agreed finally, uh, that, uh, if St. Dominic's went through with this land swap, there would not be any increase in pit fees. So we, 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 we went over that hurdle. The last hurdle, we found out, uh, that in order to give St. Dominic's clear title to the Makita land, there were several, several, several tax, um, issues, tax sale, uh, liens and everything on Makita on this property. Now, that's curious, because as you know, local governments don't pay taxes. A pit fee is the same thing as an after alarm tax, which you don't pay in the county, and Makita, as your agency, shouldn't pay it either. But somehow, year after year after year, the pit board assessed this land, and of course, Makita didn't pay it, and it went to tax sale. There's several. So Makita, of course, they flagged it, and we knew it. Uh, and so we had to have another service meeting with them. And working with Cynthia and Ronnie, uh, what I'm recommending to you today is that you have the authority on the, on the Mississippi statute to void, to rescind our, our, all tax sales, uh, that had been done improperly or erroneously. And they are. In fact, to confirm this, uh, you'll see in the documents, a letter from the, uh, chef's clerk's office recommending that you do this. And then a justification from the attorney general through an A.G. opinion of two thousand and fourteen, where specifically on point that says Makita does not pay pit fees. It's there. So what was done was done incorrectly. Nothing should have ever been assessed, nothing should have ever been sold, there should be no tax on this land. St. Dominic's knows it, but they require, of course, clean title. So, uh, if you do what I'm recommending, to rescind everything assessed to Makita on taxes, which they never owed in the first place, then, uh, St. Dominic's has a MOU that I drafted, which they've already agreed to sign. The board of directors of our hospital voted to sign it. And once we do that, we can move to swapping deeds. So, uh, I want to let the public know that you have saved, if you do this, you've saved six hundred and fifty thousand dollars in this transaction. Uh, there's no monetary switching of money. It's, it's land for land, twelve point five for thirteen, we can switch immediately. And then once they switch it, St. Makita is going to deed that land to you. Um, and then you can move forward to construct your bridge. So, uh, this was done improperly. It should be voided, I'm recommending be voided. The chess clerk agrees, and you have A.G. confirmation. And so I recommend that this action on item forty be done to effectuate this transaction.
So what does a detailed motion need to be?
To, uh, there's a, there's a forty-nine is a, if you see it's a letter there. To, the chess clerk recommends that we void tax sales related to the parcel that's enumerated on, on the attachment.
You got it there right, Ronnie, you see it?
Yes.
That'll be my motion.
All right, motion by Trey.
I'll second that motion with just saying a little bit, and I know it's coming. The contract will be here, I hope, within the next board meeting or within the next thirty days.
Uh, MOU?
Yeah, in front of us as far as the land.
We, we hoped to have done it today.
Yeah, right.
But you know, we, you have to do this first, so, yeah, I, they said they could have signed it by today.
Yeah, so it should be in front of us at the next board.
Next meeting, I, I, if they do it, it will be.
Yeah, I would like to say, uh, thank you, you know, putting in a lot of work and effort into this, because I know this has been going on for a while.
Yes.
And Makita board with Joey Deason and Skipper Jernigan as, as well, so, uh, this is a good deal. Thank you, Mike.
It's a good deal, we thank Makita, we thank, uh, chess clerk, we thank you. Uh, you'd save money and we could move forward. All right, item.
All in favor?
Nah.
All opposed? Motion carried, go ahead, Mike.
All right, I'm sorry. All right, item fifty relates also to reunion. At that same area, underneath the road that you're going to build is a pipeline owned by Texas Eastern, and it goes in a, in a, uh, uh, northeasterly direction. Uh, we have to get, uh, approval from Texas Eastern to build a road in easement over that pipeline, which they have done. But, uh, we found out during our negotiation that there's a piece of that pipeline that's old, worn out, antiquated, and they admit to that. And they said they were gonna fix it. We tried to persuade them to fix it now, once the road is torn up, fix it now before we build a new road. Uh, before road is built, fix it now, and they, uh, didn't want to agree with our timetable. All right, so, uh, there's a section in the letter that pretty much says, when they get ready to improve that pipeline, that cost is on them, but if they damage our road, as they would, then that's on us. We tried to change that, change their mind, they would not. Uh, then, uh, uh, M.DOT sent us a request saying, we want you to understand there's a risk of cost if you do this, signed this letter of no objection. And they want to meet to acknowledge the risk, which, uh, I halted at first, but Texas Eastern would not change their mind. So, uh, uh, I wrote the letter to M.DOT saying, you understand that the cost of rebuilding their road is on us, but it should be really narrow, if they fixed the pipeline and want a patch there, then all you have to do is rebuild that road, and we don't know when it's gonna be. So, uh, uh, I'm requesting that, uh, the letter that I've written to M.DOT be sent, to M.DOT acknowledging that we know we have some risk. When they repair that pipeline, we have to repair the road. And also, the, uh, uh, no law, letter of no objection be sent to in bridge and authorize Mr. Griffin to sign it, and we'll be done with that.
Motion?
Got a motion by Trey, second by Carl, discussion.
Mr. Espe, where is the letter? I know I've seen it in emails, but I don't see it on the attachment here.
And that may be my fault, uh.
I, I know the letter, I've seen it through emails.
I forwarded it to Keisha, just didn't get on there.
Well.
I forwarded that letter to Keisha along with these other two documents, and it just didn't get on there.
So maybe it should be on the agenda, it didn't make it.
Yeah, it should have been on the agenda, but if you will, just send it out to the board supervisors. I, I think all of us may have sent it through emails.
We do it this afternoon, uh, we do it this afternoon, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Hold up, don't leave, Mike.
All in favor?
Did I carry that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Uh, contract with Comcast on broadband, where are we? We need to finalize that some way or another.
The committee met, uh, try to remember now, committee met, Comcast was accepted. Uh, they sent us the template, which, uh, as you were in the meeting, that I had some concerns, major concerns. One of them is not gonna stop anything, but it won't move forward until they agree to what my concern was. And, uh, we wrote a letter, emailed to them, to my knowledge, they've not responded, to my email.
That's what I was getting to, how they responded.
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, can you follow up?
Uh, yes, sir.
Uh, as soon as you can?
Yes, sir, we'll do it.
All right.
But I followed.
Go ahead.
Uh, I did follow up with the, uh, Holmes County deal, and now they're ready to meet. They're, they're ready, all right.
When, when you get the date, let, let us know.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, Shelton? All right, moving on down to our comptroller, Nassan.
Good morning.
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 The first item I have for your approval is number fifty-one, which is the budget amendments and the end of Comcast transfers.
Make a motion for approval.
Second the motion.
Motion by Gerald, second by Carl. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
The next two items, fifty-two and fifty-three, is approval of the general claims docket and one payroll docket.
Motion.
Motion by Trey.
Second.
Second by Gerald. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
All right. All right, we on item fifty-four.
Mm-hmm.
Planting is owning?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. You approved their, um, their payment for their per diem.
Okay, do I have a motion? Motion, Mr. Banks. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Baxter. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item fifty-five?
Item fifty-five is approval of the Clerk of the Board report for the month of May, twenty twenty-two.
Move.
Got a motion, Mr. Banks. Second by Mr. Baxter. Um, all in favor? Say aye.
All right. Going to item fifty-six.
Yes, sir. Number fifty-six is the approval of the feet core claim docket.
Is there a motion? Motion by Carl?
Second.
Second by Trey. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
What else, comp trolls? That's it? All right, thank you. Ronnie?
Nothing, Mr. President.
Sheriff?
Good morning.
Morning.
Uh, before I address my item, I just wanted to say, uh, I, I was a little caught off guard this morning, uh, with Shelton's news. Uh, but I wanted to gather my thoughts before I made a comment, so if you don't mind, if I could have just a moment, uh, right after I became sheriff, uh, I think that first year Shelton took over. Uh, toward the end of that first year, and I was still green. Uh, he has helped me through all of those ten years, uh, somebody to lean on and, and, uh, somebody that, uh, I could call for assistance as far as administration and finance and, and as long as I was within one percent, I was okay. But, uh, you know, I didn't always get the answer that I wanted, but I always got the answer that was honest. And I, and I can always look back and appreciate that and, and, uh, I've learned a lot from watching just his demeanor and how he conducts business, and, uh, I want to tell you, I, I appreciate you. I've, 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 uh, learned to care for you as a friend, as a professional, and, and, uh, I think what you have done from Madison County and, and, uh, the way you've conducted business is phenomenal. I really appreciate that. And, uh, I think Madison County is, is, uh, suffering a huge loss, and it's going to be difficult to replace you, but for all the things that you have in your future, and, and I know that's going to be bright, I wish you luck. Thank you.
And can I say something about the sheriff? The sheriff and I started this one percent really as a joke. But my son has picked up on that one percent now. So when I say something to my son about watching this spending, he says as long as it's within one percent. But, but I also want to say something else about the sheriff. When I talk to county administrators across the state, I listen to difficulties that counties have, uh, funding and operating sheriff's departments and detention centers. And, and this man watches his pennies. And, and he is appreciative of the dollars, the, the pennies and the dollars that you allocate to him. He watches them, and he pays close attention. And, and we're, we're fortunate to have him, uh, doing that as sheriff.
Well, thank you for that. Uh, I only have one, one item, but it seems to be a repeat thing. Some of these, uh, some of this money is repeat money that I'm asking, uh, to bill back to the state again, DOC, uh, for March of, uh, this year for housing and medical costs. Uh, and I met with Commissioner Kane down at the, down at the sheriff's conference, uh, week four last, and, and they're trying to get a hold of it. They're trying to put in some new programs and get their, their, their intake and their medical and everything straightened out. And they've gone to the same medical provider that we use now, which is, uh, Vital Core, as you know. That's who our contract is with. So the system they're going to be putting in place is, will mimic ours now, so I think that's going to help us a lot. But, uh, for March, I'm asking you to, uh, give me the, uh, approval to bill, uh, M D O C thirty-one thousand, six hundred ninety-nine dollars and forty-one cents. And, uh, for April, twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars and seventy-six cents.
Motion.
All right, motion by Trey.
Second.
Second by Carl. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
And I, I would remind you, Mr. President, about the, the executive.
Yeah, yeah, we're going, we're going to take an executive session.
Okay, thank you.
All right, that was the sheriff. Old business.
Thank you, Sheriff.
I, I guess this might be old business. The, um, where are we? Have, have we finished all of the paperwork and everything necessary on the, um, watershed project? Uh, where are we on that? Because it's, I think we're getting where we need to have, uh, the committee needs to, needs to meet, and we need to be moving forward.
We do, and that's a good question. The county, the Madison County was awarded, uh, twenty-three million, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the Upper Bear Creek watershed. It was obligated. So the money is no issue. It's put aside for you. Now, uh, we were waiting for the cooperative agreement to be written for us, uh, and signed by the, uh, State N R C S, Natural Resource Conservation Service. All right, data got bureaucratic, Carl, bureaucratic. Uh, I have not seen such agreement. So, uh, they had a call. They didn't, there were five counties and municipalities in Mississippi that got money. In round two, they decided to wait till all of them were ready. And they had a Zoom call last week with Holmes County, Charleston, Greenville, Madison, to tell everybody the same thing. And basically, they explained the rules of road, how the bids, how, how to get the engineer, who's going to do the work, and, and all of that. Uh, I was in Washington. I was not on a call, but the administrator? I'm sorry, okay. Nassau was on a call, and my legal assistant was on a call. So she's written a memo about all of that. Um, so, uh, all I can tell you is it is proceeding. It's not as quick as we want. But, uh, I don't think anything stops the committee from meeting, because it's our project and the money is ours. Uh, we might have to negotiate some other things I thought we wouldn't. Uh, in far as process, that, that means the engineer and all of that. So we have to, uh, 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 honestly, I would like for us to be with them alone. And, uh, you know, I'm not saying we're special, but we are. We are. And I think we could maybe, uh, we can't cause any matter to change any rules or regulations. We've never asked for that. But we, we, we know how to ask how things can be expedited. And I'm, I'm, uh, I'm going to do that, and I hope, uh, hope we can move forward quickly. But the, the project is in no barrel. Uh, it's the bureaucracy that, that the, the, the state engineer of, uh, USDA state engineer is one that led the call, right, Nassau? Yeah, and, uh, we never met with him. I'd much rather meet with Homer Wilkes, the National Director, and, and the, uh, Acting State Conservation, and then we'll see where we are. Does that answer your question? It's sort of like, I don't know. It's sort of like, the call was held, but I, I don't think the, uh, the outcome is what I wanted as far as process is concerned. Nassan, you want to say anything, because you want to call? You don't have to, unless you want to.
I, I would like to follow up.
Okay.
You know, yeah, that does take time, as, as we all know. But, um, maybe we can move along with phase two. You know, as far as getting, uh, getting some other areas in, in the study and getting that done to, uh, ask for monies for that, for that area as well, for the flooding area. I'm not sure where we are there either, but hopefully we moving forward to.
And I saw, I saw a letter from Wagner Engineer.
Right.
Which, uh, I don't know where it is.
Do we need to get approval? Do, uh, we've already given Wagner approval?
With that, that letter from Wagner, it was you and I and whoever else as, you know, was supposed to look at and say, hey, uh, we, we may want to put it on the agenda, we may not. I think that when I, and I talked to Darren about it, I told him, I said, well, I really wanted to get a little further down the road of with the initial project, initial phase. Uh, and then have, so we, we, if we can get some clarity on where we are and how, and how this thing is going to be moving forward, then we can, I think, best then request additional, uh, funds for additional areas. Right now, with, I, I, I feel kind of stuck in the mud.
You have a right to feel, you have a right to feel that way. So if you will allow me, what I will do is I will call the Acting State Conservationist
Yeah.
in downtown Jackson, and I will ask for a meeting with him this week. It might be you and me or whomever. Maybe Gerald, and just see where we are.
That's a good, yeah, that's a good thing.
Okay. I believe we can do that.
All right. That works for me.
All right.
Can I say, I can't, I can't let the sheriff go by himself. Because I was also caught off guard about today. It's not, doesn't involve me at all. Uh, but, uh, I want to say the legal division of this county uh, is so appreciative of the service of, uh, the administrator. Uh, uh, great partnership, quick answers, great friendship. I didn't get every answer I wanted either, Sheriff. But you know, they were right. So, uh, we're going to miss you. Uh, you're my brother, and I wish you well in your next endeavor. Thank you.
All right, uh, I think we have one executive session, uh, before we go to new bids. All right, we'll do that now, and then we'll come back and do new bids if there any. Uh, motion for determination.
Motion to go into a closed, closed determination purposes.
Motion by Carl, second by.
Trey.
Trey. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Litigation. But I need a five-minute break, though.
Are we going to executive session for what?
He's going to get a five minutes time.
A motion and, uh.
What are we, what are we going to executive session for?
A litigation.